Our first completely remote meeting. And we are conducting this telephonically. Any person who wanted to participate, there was an 800 number on our website. Tonight is March 24th. And this is the Hanson Board of Selectmen virtual meeting. As a preliminary matter, this meeting for the Board of Select, Hanson Board of Selectmen, permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kenny Mitchell?
Yes.
Jim Hickey?
Yeah, here.
Matt Dyer?
Here.
Wes Bloss?
Here.
And John Stanbrook?
We, I'm here with Greer, but just, this is to Ryan. I can't see anything at all. You're just listening on the phone right now.
Okay. I, I don't know that we're showing anything, are we, Ryan? I, um, it's, it's mostly telephonically.
Yeah.
All right, you're breaking up a little bit there, Ryan. Also, I wanted to anticipate a speaker on the agenda. If you are on, if you could let me know. Mac Johnson? He, I think he was gonna, going to join us at 7:30, so perhaps he isn't on yet. And Maura Rouse?
Yes, I'm here. Hello.
Okay, great. This open meeting of the Hanson Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, Governor, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Hanson Board of Selectmen is convening by telephone, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. We're now going to turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone when you are not speaking, or your computer, if you're on your computer. And please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meetings. For any responses, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a discussion with other members, please do so through the chair so that we can identify and take accurate minutes. After, to the general public, after members have spoken, I will afford the public comment as follows. I'll first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And then, once I have a list of those folks, I'll call in each person. And finally, each vote that we take in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So there, there are the ground rules. And we will start our meeting as we always do by having the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you've joined me virtually, I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bloss for the public announcements.
All right, Mr. Bloss. And please tell me if I cannot be heard clearly.
That does not seem to be a problem.
Volunteers I needed on the following committees: 200th anniversary, Conservation Commission regular and two associate members, Cultural Council, Disabilities, Economic Development, Finance, Highway Building Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Day Patriotic Observance, Memorial Field Trustees, North River Commission, and Zoning Board alternate. Applications for appointment and info on the committee is available on the town website, Upcoming meetings: Tuesday, April 7th, Tuesday, April 14th, and Tuesday, April 28th. All Board of Selectmen meetings at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mackenzie Johnson, have you joined us yet? Okay. I'm going to take the liberty of switching things around just a little bit on the agenda. And since we are joined by Maura Rouse, and if I have completely killed your name, I apologize in advance, from the Southeastern Regional Services Group. And I'm wondering if you could tell us a bit about yourself and what your organization does? And, and then we have a vote to take regarding participating in the consortium.
Yes, certainly. Hello, everybody. Thank you, Board of Selectmen, for this opportunity to present to you. I've been in contact with John Stanbrook and Matt Cahill over the last few weeks. The Southeastern Regional Services Group is a consortium of 23 towns and cities, contiguous in the region just to the west of Hanson. Sursage, as we call it, or Sursage, as some people say. It provides procurement services and some training, primarily for the Departments of Public Works. There are six standard procurements that I bid each year. They're all 30B except for the Department of Public Works Services bid, which is a 3039M. Bid for those people familiar with procurement law. In general, the contracts are of a lower, of a lower cost to towns than the state contracts, which are accessible to all towns and cities in the state. And they are procured following all 30B, all procurement laws. I'm sorry, I won't get into the details. The organization has been around since the mid 1990s. It was formed when procurement law was fairly new and the county governments had been abolished for most procurement purposes in the state. It's a way to get bulk discounts on bids that everybody needs to use, paper, office supplies, water and sewer treatment chemicals, and Department of Public Works supplies. I understand all of the Select Board members have received a brochure. That's what it looks like. It describes what our services are and a little bit about our history. In general, the prices are comparable with or lower than state contracts and they are significantly easier to use, which is why the member towns use them. I understood that Matt Cahill had been able to speak with most people about the benefit that this might serve. And I understand you may also be interested in participating in the upcoming spring bids that would secure contracts effective July 1st. My personal background is that I have 20 years of financial services experience and a more recent master in public administration degree, which I've devoted to procurement law. And I've worked for Sursage for the last five years. Are there any questions that I can answer for people about the information provided in the brochure, about the individual bids, or about our services in general?
I think probably one of the most obvious questions that I'm thinking most everybody on the board and on the phone would be asking is, you know, how much would we save? And how much does this cost? And how are you paid?
Okay. I am, the cost to each member town for an entire year is $4,100. It's not prorated by the size of the town or the size of a town's budget. It's a simple $4,100. I am paid as an employee of Sursage. Sursage is technically a nonprofit 501(c) organization. It's formed as a collaboratively managed group, so a representative from each of the member towns and cities votes, has a seat on the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors controls all decisions and all significant finances for the organization, and I am paid from that organization. I'm not a municipal employee. Technically, I'm a nonprofit employee. There are no benefits provided, simply a salary. And the $4,100 is made up by most towns in one quarter of use of the contract that they secure. For instance, the city of Brockton participates in paper and office supplies, does not participate in any of the other four bids, which are primarily DPW-related, and they make up the $4,100 in about a month by savings off list price and savings off of the prices secured by state contracts and the simplicity of the Sursage contracts. I'm sorry.
So Laura, I think, you know, obviously, we're not a Brockton, but we are comparable to East Bridgewater. We're comparable to East Bridgewater. So what kinds of savings have you seen in a town of that size? Like what, you know?
That's an excellent question. What I wanted to say was, the office supply contracts I looked at for comparably sized towns were for Abington, Medfield, and Lakeville. Those towns, although similar in population, are dissimilar in other ways. Their savings from the office supply contract for an entire year is, in this case of Medfield, which does not use the office supply contract for its school departments, it only uses it for town administration and related services. They save $14,000 each year off of list prices. The list price is, of course, not something most towns are going to pay. You're going to use a state contract or some other discounted service. The, the savings off of those costs is closer to half of that, or $7,000 a year.
Okay. That's great.
I'm sorry, let me just answer one question before I forget it. Abington, which does use the office supply contract for schools, see, spends $47,000 a year through the office supply contract and saves an average each year of $15,000 off of the state contract prices.
That's pretty impressive. And, you know, obviously, you can see how the skills of economy would benefit a town to link up with other towns and purchase in bulk. So it makes completely perfect sense. John, did you want to give us any insight into why you thought this would be good? Or, you know, any kind of colored commentary on that?
I think Highway Director Matt Cahill is also on the line. And I, I think that he had met with the DPW director in East Bridgewater, John Haynes. And they had talked about it. I know Maura from working in Mansfield. They work in the same building, and Sursage works in the same building as the Town Hall, but, you know, they're not linked in any way. So I did know her. Once, once Matt had talked to John Haynes in East Bridgewater and thought it might be something he wanted to look into, I put him in touch with Maura, and that's kind of how we got the ball rolling. And I, obviously, the, the scale, economies of scale are there. I think Hanson would benefit from this type of consortium type of process. If nothing else, then just the time savings of having to do all this bidding and purchasing and procurement, you know, the, the steps that you have to take and all of that. Just, just the paperwork alone, I think, is worth the yearly amount. And so, I mean, that's all I really had to say. Maybe Matt Cahill might want to chime in on something if he'd like.
Well, I, yeah, I was going to ask you guys, and I don't know who's the right person. What are we envisioning in terms of the types of things that we would be working with this consortium on purchasing? Are we just office supplies? Are we going to look at highway supplies? Is that, you know, can, can somebody kind of shed a little light on that?
I, I have a vision.
I can shed some light on that.
Sorry, go ahead, Matt. Because all I was going to say is that I, I was thinking highway first. So that's right up Matt's alley, so.
So highway-wise, we've already, I've already looked at everything and given Maura quantities based off average uses in the past five years. I took out water and find out, you know, what they're doing right now. And just, they, they were already interested in the paper. And I talked to Jamison recently about looking into talking to the other departments and Town Hall on paper supplies. But this would take care of both fuel and all the materials that the Highway Division's using. And also provide services that we have to bid constantly yearly. And I think, as John mentioned, it would benefit us greatly having this power and this ability. And give us also some teeth behind our contracts, too.
Okay, I mean, that, that sounds great. And just for those, the benefit of those listening who may not be familiar with you, Mr. Cahill, can you just let everybody know who you are?
I apologize. I'm Matthew Cahill, the Hanson Highway Director.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Stanbrook, is there any thought to us rolling this out more broadly beyond Highway? So I think what I heard you say is, this would be sort of our litmus test. We'll, you know, see how that goes and then maybe circle back and think about using it more broadly?
Yes, that's, that's exactly what I was thinking is, you know, for right now, I think the most, the most gain for the, for the least amount of time, I guess, would be in the Highway. But eventually, I'd like to look at every contract that Sursage has. And I'm, I'm quite confident we're probably going to be saving some real, real money all around with everything that they're doing. But right now, it was Highway-focused.
Okay. Well, I'm excited. I, I'm thrilled that you and Matt brought this to us. I'm going to open it up to the Board and see if anybody had any comments. Mr. Mitchell, or questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Kenny Mitchell, Vice Chair. My question is, I noticed in the brochure that the money that you had saved, you guys, your group had saved in school supplies. So we have a regional school district with the town of Whitman. So my question is, would Whitman have to be signed up in order for us to take advantage of the savings for school supplies where it's a regional school system?
That's an excellent question. There are some regional districts that where both or multiple towns are members of Sursage and they do benefit from the contracts on their school departments. For example, though, the town of Abington is in a water district with the town of Rockland, and they do purchase water district supplies using our contract from Abington, even though Rockland has not been a Sursage member since 2010. And that is fully acceptable. So I believe that it would be acceptable for your school district to be included in the office supply contract through Hanson's membership. I can review that with you more thoroughly if we look at that down the road. I only bid office supply contracts every two years. Once Hanson is a Sursage member, I would be at liberty to ask our current office supply provider whether they would be willing to extend their contract price to Hanson. And that's likely going to pass. So the answer to the district question is yes. The answer to the current office supply is, I would probably be able to get you included in our current supply contract, even though it runs through next June 30th.
I mean, I think, Kenny, I think that we could really have some great savings there if we could. But I mean, right now, we're just rolling it out for Highway. But if we end up taking that next step, then I, I, you know, we could maybe start the conversation now with the district to think about whether they'd want to.
I'm speaking for the district. You know, just in case they wanted to take advantage of it, I just want to make sure that there wasn't a hiccup where, hey, Whitman's not, they're not paying the money, so no, we can't do this. I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Not going to be a problem. I do have one other piece of information, which is related to the Highway contracts in particular. And again, I looked at comparably sized towns of Medfield, Lakeville, and Abington and wanted to share with you that on their DPW supply contracts, the three towns spend an average of $330,000 through the DPW supply contract. As Matt said, that covers your fuel. It covers aggregate products like gravel and sand that are used on road construction. And, and it goes, it runs the gamut. Manhole covers, pipes, all sorts of things. So I believe that it might be a very useful contract for your Highway Department.
Okay, that's great. I'm going to continue along and ask the other Board members if they have any questions. Mr. Hickey, any questions or comments?
Yes, I just want to make sure you had mentioned $4,100. So I want to make sure that I understand it, that it would be a Highway contract for $4,100. And then if we went with the school and office supplies, is that another $4,100? Or is it $4,100 across the board?
It's $4,100 to be a member. And you, each town then decides how many of the procurements to join. And I offer six procurements a year. They are paper office supplies, DPW supplies, water and sewer treatment chemicals, and drug and alcohol testing, and DPW services. So you could use just the one or two contracts and, or all six of them for the same price, $4,100 for the whole thing. And with Hanson joining this late in our fiscal year, the cost would be $1,366 for the balance of this fiscal year.
Okay, so that would lead me to the next question that with only this much time left in the fiscal year, we could, it would almost be like we were trying, trying you guys out. And then if it worked, there would be a new contract for next year?
That's correct. The new contract would begin July 1st. The $1,366 would allow me to include Hanson in the DPW supplies bid that I'm going, that's going to hit the street the end of this week. And that would be why Matt's already provided me some quantity estimates to include in anticipation of this approval. If you all approve this membership tonight, I will include Hanson in the bid. And July 1st, you'll have new contracts. And yes, July 1st, you'll be invoiced for a full year of membership.
Okay. And I guess my last question, if I heard you correctly, you said that your executive board is members of the towns.
Correct.
And typically, without actually naming any names, could you give me an idea of the positions that some of those people might hold in their towns?
Yes. So currently, from the town of Abington, I don't have a representative on the Board. Dory Jamison, who had been the Assistant Town Administrator there for many years, was the representative on our Board until she retired. And then Brockton's procurement officer sits on the Board. Canton, I have, I'm sorry, his new, Randy Scollins. He's the town accountant, or I think.
Well, I guess. Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, well, typically, then, it's not a Selectman. It would be, let's say, a town administrator or, or the head of the Highway or an accountant.
Correct. And there, the Board of Directors is a representative from the Administration Office, whether that is the town administrator, him or herself, or a delegate. It does vary. Sometimes it's an Assistant Town Administrator. Sometimes it's, what do you want to say, a procurement officer or an executive assistant.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Dyer, any questions or comments?
I guess my question would be term of the contract. How long would it last? And then, second, who would be tracking the savings that we would see so that we could review them at the end of the term of the contract?
Okay. I, I heard your second question and forgot your first. I'm sorry.
Not a problem. My first question was, how long would the contract be? And then the second part would be, who would be tracking the savings for us to review at the end of the term of the contract?
Right. Okay. So the contract term, if Hanson becomes a member, you are a member for each year that the town pays the dues for. There are some documents, which I have provided to John Stanbrook and, and Matt Cahill, that require authorization for me to bid on Hanson's behalf. The town of Hanson and the Select, and the Board of Selectmen can choose to be a full member with a vote on that Board or to be an associate member, where you take advantage of the services. You pay for the membership, but you are not given a vote on the Board. If you choose to, you can do that and not sign the intermunicipal agreement. Otherwise, each of these members has an intermunicipal agreement signed to authorize me to bid on your behalf. And the, if you can sign all those documents, try out the contract. As I said, the contracts for DPW supplies would be effective July 1st. You try it out for one year with another $4,100 in dues payment. And at the end of next year, if you've not seen the savings you anticipated or benefited from the administration support of procurement, then you don't have to renew anything. It would end at the end of June 30th, 2021. So that's the contract term. The savings and tracking that savings at, at each year end, whether you, as a town, are a fiscal year or a calendar year organization, I provide an annual report that summarizes the use of Sursage contracts. I can include an analysis of savings as compared with state contract pricing or with list pricing. Unfortunately, state contract pricing varies and their contracts are complex to use. So we deem, Sursage members generally deem the use of simple contracts as a specific benefit to the member towns. Because you don't have to go out and check out three different state contracts and compare their prices. You just pick a contract up off your shelf and you know exactly the dollar amount that you'll be paying for each item.
Right. But I think, I think what Mr. Dyer is saying, you know, each year would, would need to make a thoughtful analysis of how much we have saved to, you know, justify. And it doesn't seem like it would be difficult to justify. But you're able to say, you know, look, if you guys did this on your own, you probably would have paid this. And because you're part of the consortium, you paid this.
Correct. I, in the annual town report that I provide for each member, so Hanson would receive one of those, I can include by request an analysis of specific price, prices. I do add in one or two price comparisons for all members in their annual report. If you wanted a full analysis of all items that you procure contracts for, I would need to know that before I write the annual report.
Okay.
Yep. I'm sorry. Am I answering that adequately or not?
Oh, yeah, no, I, I think so. Mr. Dyer, are you satisfied with that answer?
Yep, thank you very much.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Mr. Bloss?
No, it sounds good. And I thank John and Matt both for taking the initiative to get this hopefully started.
Agreed. I, I've got one other question. Throughout your, your brochure, et cetera, et cetera, you talk about DPW services. And can you just articulate specifically, I'm thinking, do you do anything in the way of trash hauling?
We do not bid for trash hauling. Trash hauling services are exempt from 30B procurement law, at least as of today. That there, there is a move afoot to change that. The services we bid for include paving, sidewalks, concrete work, trench patch repair. I, I believe there, well, there are over 20 different items of DPW services, traffic line painting, et cetera, that we bid for. But trash hauling is not among them.
Okay. All right, great. Did, Mr. Stanbrook, did you have any comments or questions? Or Mr. Cahill?
This is John Stanbrook. I'm, I'm all set.
Hi, Cahill, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. And did anybody from the public have any questions? And if you do, please state your name and address.
Yes, I have a question.
Please state your name and address, sir.
Bruce Young, 594 Ianhead Street, Hanson. Under the Town Administrator Act, the Town Administrator in the town of Hanson, in this case, Mr. Stanbrook is, is the town, is designated as the state procurement, as the town's procurement officer under, under that section of the law which pertains to Hanson. How does he, how does he relinquish that under the law and, and turn it over to this consortium and this, this individual?
John, would you want to speak to that, or shall I?
I think, I, I can speak to it as long as I make sure that, I think what you're going to say is the same thing I am, Maura, and that is, there's a delegation form, Mr. Young, that, that allows a a, a procurement officer to, uh, delegate certain procurement, um, acts to another person. Usually it's someone in the town, but it can be, in this case, a, a consortium. And, uh, by signing that, I, I can delegate those, at, those things to another person inside, uh, in the town or outside the town in order to do the procurement. So, uh, I believe that, uh, Moira has a, a delegation form, um, that I could sign that would allow her to procure just the things that, uh, that she's doing. And I would not be relinquishing, relinquishing any, uh, you know, any duties or response. And I, if I remember right, Moira on the, on the form, there's even something that where I can, you, you can go ahead and, um, and make the, uh, uh, you know, make the bid, but then I still would have final say on whether or not we do it, or, uh, whether we, um, participate. Is that correct? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, you, the, the town administrator can authorize delegation to me for only Department of Public Works bids, or for specific bids that you name if you choose to, or for the, the, all the procurement search such provides, which, like I said, at this point, it, it's six procurements. Um, but then at the time of bidding, you, the town may decide not to participate in any of the six items.
And I just had, that, that, that answered my question adequately. I just had one more question, and that would be, uh, do you, do you handle, um, annual bids that are normally the purview of the, of the Hanson, Hanson Water Department as well?
Did you say the Hanson Water Department?
Yes.
Yes, I, um, we offer a bid for, um, water and sewer treatment chemicals. For this first year, Matt Cahill and I discussed the opportunity and decided not to try to incorporate Hanson's need for the July first twenty through June thirtieth twenty-one period in this first experiment. But we could procure those con, those chemicals in the future for Hanson if you want.
Okay, thank you. Was there anybody else that had any questions? And if so, please state your name and address. Okay, uh, Mr. Stanbrook, uh, obviously, uh, we need a motion from this board to enter into a contract, um, with Southeastern Regional Services Group for the purposes of purchasing highway materials. Is there something else that we should be saying? Is there a specific motion that you're looking for?
Uh, I, I believe that just to authorize me to sign the appropriate documents in order to carry that out.
Okay, uh, I will entertain a motion, and please state your name, uh, if you're making the motion and seconding.
This is Matt Dyer, I move that motion.
Okay.
Uh, Jim Hickey, second.
Okay, uh, roll call, uh, any, any further discussion amongst the board before we go to a vote? Okay, great, uh, roll call vote, Mr. Mitchell?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Laura Kemet, yes. Okay, well, thank you, um, we really appreciate you coming to speak to us, Moira. And, uh, it's very, very informative and very exciting. And again, uh, I echo Mr. Blas' sentiments. We are appreciative of, uh, Mr. Stanbrook and Mr. Cahill bringing this to our attention. This is exactly the type of innovative thinking and cost-saving that we're all looking for. So we thank you, and we look forward to seeing how this, how this works. Hopefully it will be a successful relationship.
I hope so too, thank you for this opportunity.
All right, thank you. All right, take care. And, uh, with, Mr. Dyer?
Uh, before Moira goes, uh, could we also just request those, uh, cost savings, uh, report, uh, for the end of the year?
Okay, so when the annual report's prepared, you'd like me to include cost savings analysis for Hanson?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, with that, uh, we will go to, uh, hopefully Mac Johnson, are you on the phone? Okay, uh, what time have we got, seven thirty-eight? Mac, can you hear us? Okay, well, I guess, um, move along. Greer, if you're there, if there's some way you could try to reach Mr. Johnson to see if he's planning on joining us, virtually, that would be great. We'll move on to the coronavirus update. So, the first item under the coronavirus update is, um, to discuss the temporary ban on reusable bags. And as you all know, we've got our, um, ban on plastic bags, uh, that, uh, everybody voted to implement at town meeting. And, uh, however, in light of the coronavirus, we've had a lot of people reaching out asking whether we should temporarily ban reusable bags uh, because they are concerned that the coronavirus could be transmitted, could be carried on these. And, uh, the state of New Hampshire has banned reusable bags, uh, you know, not that we're necessarily gonna follow suit to New Hampshire, a couple other towns have. So, um, because I'm trying to be responsive to what people's concerns are, we put it on the agenda. And I believe, Mr. Amato, are you, uh, on the phone with us?
Yes.
Okay, oh.
He's, he's with, uh, this is John Stanbrook, he's in the, uh, selectman's room with me right now. So he, he's with, uh, he's not on the phone, he's in person with me.
Okay, hopefully socially distancing. So, um, Mr. Amato, did you want to weigh in with your thoughts on that as our, um, Hanson health agent?
Yes, I spoke to Aline Diaz today, and she, uh, mentioned the fact that, uh, most, uh, stores now will not put the product in this bag, the reusable bags, and that, uh, they, they have the, uh, customer put the product in the bags. Otherwise, you'll get the plastic bags from them. Spoke to her earlier tonight, I mean, the bags do carry, you know, they do carry things, uh, I mean, I believe the only place that really uses them would be Shaw's. And, uh, I think it would be hard to enforce, you know, the personal use of the bags. I think it's up to the store themselves to say, hey, look, we don't want to put your product in those bags.
Okay, um, so what, it, uh, it, what is the position of the board of health? That we should or should not be doing anything to ban reusable bags?
No, I'd be, I'd be more of an advisory to the, to the store. And, uh, I will go out tomorrow to Shaw's and discuss it with their management, their position on it. And then we can go from there, we can, uh, you know, we can set up a ban. It shouldn't be too hard to do that. But I believe that's the only place now that's using them.
Yeah, I think that's probably true. I mean, I, I, I'm sure there are, you know, extremely, um, you know, conscientious people who bring their reusable bags to everywhere, including the liquor store and the Dollar Tree. But probably the place that we would see it most often would be Shaw's. I, I would tend to agree with that. I will open it up to, uh, I'm sorry, Gil, was that you speaking?
Yes, I'd say, I, I'll go out there tomorrow and speak to the stores, speak to the management.
Okay, well, let's just have, let's have a discussion tonight. I mean, the board of health can certainly act independently, um, and, and should act independently. And, and, you know, that's, that's definitely your mission. But I, I think we, I wanted to just also talk to this board about it. So I'm just gonna go around and, and see what, uh, the rest of the board has to say about it. So, um, Mr. Mitchell, thoughts?
I would defer to Selectman Dyer.
Well, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll get to Mr. Dyer, definitely. Mr. Hickey?
Well, I spoke to Michelle about this earlier today, and she said that, um, Shaw's packed her reusable bags for her and Stop and Shop. I know that she went to Shaw's Saturday morning, early, uh, and, and they packed it. So unless, uh, Shaw's has actually changed, um, their view on it in the last three days, I mean, I would just leave it up to the individual store.
Okay, Mr. Blas?
It's actually the same, both Joanne and I have now been to Stop and Shop multiple times with our reusable bags and knowing that they've been fine with it, there's been no comment made. So, so I, I hate to jump, and I would say wait, I would wait until Mr. Amato, you know, made contact and see what, what he thinks.
Okay, and Mr. Dyer?
Um, hi, this is Matt. Um, I don't believe that reusable bags has a significant, uh, chance of spreading coronavirus. Um, I think there are higher, uh, chances, um, of spreading coronavirus just by touching the items in the store. But I don't believe that the reusable bags are gonna spread coronavirus any more than the cashier touching every item that goes through the store itself. Uh, this past weekend, when I went to Shaw's, uh, they were really great. The cashiers are doing a great job down there, where they said, unfortunately, uh, Shaw's has a policy now in place where we cannot pack your bags, but if you want to use your reusable bag, feel free. And I did so, I saved the planet. I think we also have to keep in mind in this time of crisis to also balance the needs of the environment as well. So I just say, leave it, um, up to Beacon Hill and follow any advisory from Beacon Hill.
Okay, so we've got a, a plethora of opinions on this. It seems as though the majority, first of all, it seems as though everybody's having different experiences at Shaw's. Um, you know, from you, Matt, who's having them say, we're not touching it, to Michelle who's being asked to pack herself, and, um, and, uh, so we've got different experiences and we've got different vantage points. I think, um, this really does fall under the purview of the board of health. I'm just putting it on here to get the discussion going and maybe to give, uh, the board of health some idea about where the selectmen's heads are at, what we are hoping that they would do. Do people feel comfortable with Mr. Amato having a conversation? And again, he can do this anyway, whether we tell him that he can or not. Having a conversation with Shaw's, uh, about, you know, um, either having people pack their own bags or not using the reusable bags. I, I think, you know, uh, to, I, I hear what you're saying, Matt, but I think I'm, I'm, I just want to mitigate any possible thing that we, we can. And we can't, you know, make people make good choices, but we can try to put a few infrastructure, um, changes in place. And I, I definitely don't want to have us step backwards on, uh, moving towards the plastic bag ban. But I also want to be thoughtful about, um, where we're at now, which is a place we probably could never contemplate, um, you know, back when, when we did all of this. So, um, do people generally feel comfortable with just, you know, partnering with Mr. Amato and having him go as the town's health agent and just have a conversation about maybe those two paths? People pack their own things, or they use the plastic bags that Shaw's has, or, or paper bags, rather? Uh, Mr. Mitchell?
I'm with Laura, this is Kenny Mitchell.
Okay, okay, Mr. Hickey?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, Mr. Blas?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, and, and, um, are you okay with that, Mr. Dyer?
Everything.
Okay, all right, great. I don't think we need to have a formal vote on that, but Mr. Amato, do you feel comfortable with what we've just discussed?
Yes.
Okay, great. And while we've got you on here, um, is there anything else that we couldn't have contemplated putting on the agenda that you'd like to let us know about? That you and Ms. Diaz or the board are working on, or anything that you'd, any message you'd like to share, um, with, with folks? I know you've been on the Department of Public Health calls on a daily basis, and I didn't know if there was anything you'd want to share with us.
Well, as of this time, there's nothing really new, uh, you know, they're just giving reports on, you know, the positives and that stuff. That's, you know, the basic, uh, survey the Department of Public Health puts out every day. Uh, that's what they discussed, and, uh, you know, what the state's trying to do, and protocols and whatnot. I'm also enforcing, you know, the, the act of, uh, closing salons and all that, making sure everybody does close. Uh, most businesses I, uh, went to today, uh, they hear salons, but I was saying, everybody's pretty much closed. Uh, there was a question as far as smoke shops and whatnot, as far as them being essential or non-essential. I got a thing from the Department of Public Health yesterday afternoon, they are non-essential, so both of them are closed today, and they are well aware they were non-essential. So, uh, following up on all the, the stores and everything, making sure everybody's doing the right thing. So I think we're doing pretty good. Like I say, tomorrow I'll be out again checking all other businesses that, uh, feel they are essential and could be non-essential, so I'm doing that tomorrow. So it's going pretty good, I think everybody's working well together, everybody's cooperating. And I don't see any problems really coming up as far as the closing of the businesses.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to hear. Uh, you know, I think, uh, the state did a pretty good job of, um, you know, really outlining. I mean, it was a pretty exhaustive list of non-essential and, you know, essential. Well, really, they said who was essential, and then you kind of needed to use your decoder ring and figure out you weren't essential. But, uh, you know, but they, but they did say that if people, individual businesses had had concerns to let the state know, and, and they would, on a case-by-case basis, make a determination. And, and it's tough, nobody wants to see small businesses close, and particularly not in Hanson, because we have so few of them, and they're hanging on by a thread as it is. So, um, you know, I'm sure those have been some difficult decisions and difficult conversations, and we appreciate that, um, Mr. Amato. And, um, Mr. Amato, um, uh, also, um, you know, if we were to have a case of coronavirus in Hanson, would the board of health let us know that? In the form of, uh, you know, obviously not who has coronavirus or where they live, but that there was a reported case? Is that something that we would expect to hear from the board of health on?
Uh, no, you wouldn't, uh, there was a, the governor signed an order that, uh, anything positive would go to the, uh, emergency, uh, emergency officer of the town, which is Chief Mix. Uh, he would get any call from the Visiting Nurse Association, which handles our Maven site. He would be the one to get the call as far as the positive and location. So he's handling that part of it, uh, the board of health does not get it.
So he's putting that in the Maven site, which is the tracking mechanism? Is that how that works?
No, the Maven, the Maven tracking, uh, the Visiting Nurse Association handles ours. We have a contract with them until June. And the visiting nurse would contact him and give him the information, positive.
Okay, so if I'm just a normal citizen in the town of Hanson, and I want to know if anybody in Hanson has got coronavirus, how would I, would I know? Would I have no way of knowing that?
No, you wouldn't, cause Maven only, Maven only reports it on the Department of Public Health by county.
Yep, okay, so those are the reports we've been seeing that Mr., uh, that Representative Cutler has been putting out, which rolls it up into a county report.
That's the only, that's the only information that's available to the public.
Okay, I've just, other towns I know have, you know, like, or surrounding towns like Pembroke and that type of thing have put out a, you know, little announcement saying, a, you know, a citizen in Pembroke has tested positively. They don't obviously say who or where they live or anything like that. So I just wanted to know what our protocol was going to be in Hanson.
Some of the towns have decided, some of the towns have decided not to do that because, uh, the Department of Public Health and the phone calls we have, and, uh, to make sure that no information leaks out. So some of the towns have stopped announcements and, uh,
Okay.
Giving it up to the Department of Public Health to make the announcement. The call today was making sure that all boards of health rely on verified information, don't rely on rumors, and nothing leaks out of Maven, and they want to be absolutely positive of that, so.
Well, and you know, quite honestly, as you know, Mr. Amato, um, these are just the cases that you know about, or people that have tested positively, and there may be a lot of people that are self-quarantining, you know, and, and, you know, at the first sign of, of, of having something. So the numbers can be, um, inaccurate, um, you know, based on numbers of people, you know, availability of tests, on people's self-reporting, and on the stigma, people may not actually, um, want to let anybody know that they've got it. So, um, anything else that you wanted to let us know from a health, health agent or board of health perspective?
Uh, one thing I've learned through all this, uh, you know, in dealing with, uh, computers and whatnot, we've realized, I think every department here has realized that our system of, uh, computers is very, very backwards. In order for me to get, uh, a copy of, uh, how many salons we had in town, it had to be handwritten from a, you know, a loose-leaf notebook from the town clerk's office. I think that's something that we should realize from this virus that, you know, the systems in this town hall are very antiquated to a certain degree, and I think, uh, for better.
Yes, I think we have a lot of lessons learned, Mr. Amato. And we will be doing a, uh, you know, a forensic look at lessons learned once we get through, um, you know, through this. So I understand, and I would add that to the list of other things that we've worked around successfully as a team, but, uh, that have perhaps made it more difficult than it needed to be. So, okay, thank you, um, so that moves us, um, and, oh, I'm sorry, who is that? Yes.
Karine, Karine Cifato, Winslow Drive. To the, to Mr. Amato, um, please. To the, to Mr. Amato, please check the drive-throughs. They're not using gloves. I would think they would have to be since they're serving food. I had someone put their hand over the coffee cup, you know, when they put the cover on, so I refused the coffee. I mean, I don't want any, I know business is tough out there right now, and I hate for anyone to lose, but at the same time, I'm wearing a mask, I'm wearing gloves. I don't expect them to be wearing masks, but at least gloves.
Well, Ms. Cifato, could I, could I ask you to please circle back with Mr. Amato on the specifics of that after this meeting?
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Okay. And did you have something else that you would like to share, or?
I'm all set unless anybody else has any questions.
Okay. Did anybody on the board have any questions, Mr. Mitchell?
Nope.
Mr. Hickey?
Nope.
Mr. Boss?
Nope.
Mr. Dyer?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, fabulous. Thank you for that update, Mr. Amato. And has Mac Johnson joined us?
Uh, yes, I have.
Okay, great. Well, we're happy to have you, Mac. So we are all meeting virtually. This is a bold new world for us, but we will get through this. So you sent us your, your Boy Scout, you're in Boy Scout Troop 138, and you've got an Eagle Scout project that you're planning on putting in three new fire pits. So I'm going to turn it over to you. We do have your project in our packet that we all received virtually, so we've got the benefit of that PowerPoint. Did you want to tell us a bit about your project, who you're going to be working with, how you're acquiring the funds to do the work, and what your timeline is and all that good stuff?
Uh, yeah. So, let me just pull up this presentation real quick. Um, so as far as money-wise, I have all the supplies. They were all donated from Masport. They donated all the cobblestone, all the mortar, and all the stuff that would be needed to put together. That's, there's the picture of it on the first slide, and then...
Excuse me, Mac, just for a moment. I'm not sure who, we can hear somebody in the background. I don't know if it's you that's got somebody in the background or if it's somebody on the phone that needs to mute their phone, but there's some background noise coming through. Okay, go ahead, continue.
For me, all right.
Okay.
So the first page, you can see that's the, that's where the fireplaces are located. And then the next slide is the cobblestone. That was donated by Masport, so the cobblestone's all set. And then the circle fire pit design is what I plan on putting out the main lodge, Needles Lodge. And then the square design is for the north and south cabin.
Okay.
There's a picture of the fire pit outside of Needles Lodge. So it's pretty worn down and could be refurbished. And then a little, the circle is what I plan on it looking like. And after that, I have the north campsite. The north campsite actually has two fireplaces, and I plan on demolishing one, getting rid of the other one, and then rebuilding that one into a square. And then afterwards with time left over, there's a lot of pile of gravel that's been collected over the years from all the plows. And there's a lot of, like, the shoulders are very worn out. You can see a little further up, there's a lot of holes. And then there's a lot of dips inside the parking lot that I plan to fix with the extra time. I have a lot of hands, helping hands from Troop 138. They're a fairly big troop out of Braintree. So...
Okay, yeah, that's great. I wasn't familiar with 138. I know 34 and, you know, some, the other ones around Hanson. So I like the idea of us getting out of town as to help do this. You know, that, it's a great project. And what made you decide to tackle this? I assume you were up there and saw the pitiful state that the fire pits were in and thought that was, that was what you should be doing?
Yeah, I'm a Hanson resident, so I guess, like, I've always gone there almost every summer at the Cranberry Cove.
Yeah.
But when I was younger, I was a part of the Hanson troop, and they did a lot of activities at Camp Kwani. And that was like 10 years ago, and the fireplace is still wearing the bestest of shape 10 years ago. So, um, so I just thought I could help give back to one of the main, like, there's not a lot of campgrounds in Hanson at all. Like, that's kind of the, the main spot. So I thought I could help out, because that's just been a big place in my childhood, like a big part of my childhood. I thought...
All right, well, it's a great, great project. Is there anything else that you wanted to let us know? I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the board to ask you questions, but anything before I do that?
Um, I think I can just answer any questions that are, any questions that anyone has.
Okay, great. Well, of course, we really appreciate you, you know, doing this on behalf of the town. Mr. Mitchell, any questions or comments for Mr. Johnson?
Just a quick comment. Hey, Mac, this PowerPoint is great. I love it. The pictures of the fire pits and everything, I think you did a great job, so luck with everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hickey?
Hey, Matt, Mac, I just wanted to say thanks, and when do you have to have this done by?
So the plan was to get it done within a few weekends of April, but obviously with the coronavirus, it's, you know, getting pushed a little bit. But I'd like to have it completed before June.
Okay, so let me ask you this. I was a Boy Scout myself, so are the Boy Scouts, because of what's going on, extending Eagle projects where you guys might be close to your 18th birthday?
So I'm going to have to talk to the board because I am not sure about that. I wasn't really planning for this outbreak, I guess. So I'm hoping that I'll get a little more time, but I do turn 18 in June, so it's kind of a little bit of a tight timeline. So I'm going to have to talk to them and find out if I can get an extension.
Okay, so my last question then would be, do you have enough volunteers to help you with this project?
Uh, yes, I'm, even with, I have a lot, I was a part of a smaller troop, and they're very like, into it, even with the virus, I've had a couple volunteers say that they can still come out. I just limit the amount of people that we'd have go up out with the project. So I keep down to like three to four, and it could take a couple of weekends. But the fireplaces themselves, three or four people could put them together in a fairly decent amount of time.
Okay, excellent. Good luck.
Thank you.
And, Mac, just so you know, we have shut down all town properties, including Camp Kwani, so you'd really need to work with Mr. Stanbrook if you were going to try to coordinate having volunteers up there while we're on the shutdown. And maybe it would be helpful for you if we provided you with something in writing saying that so that you could bring it to, you know, to the board, just to, you know, see if you could get, you know, we'll work with you. Look, we're hoping, we're hoping that this all resolves quicker than we, than it feels like it will right now. Mr. Boss, did you have anything?
Mac, can you just confirm to the public that you have worked with the Recreation Commission and are fully board on our recreation director and they're on board?
I'm sorry, that came in a little...
He asked if you could just confirm that you're working with the Recreation Commission, that you have their permission and that they're on board with this project?
Uh, yes, I actually attended one of their meetings before this meeting, and they approved it, and that's what sent me to the Selectmen.
Great.
Okay, he said great. You're, Mr. Boss, your phone's a little buzzy. I don't know, I don't know quite what's going on there. Mr. Dyer?
Hi, this is Matt. Mac, great presentation, both at Camp Kwani and your PowerPoint here online. I've worked for the Park Service and for DCR over the years, and I've had the pleasure of cleaning out countless fire pits. So I just wanted to ask you a couple of quick questions on the design. Are they going to have drainage? So when someone puts out a fire and they puts gallons and gallons of water on it, is it going to be able to, is, does your design allow that water to drain out so by the next day, the next user could use the fire pit?
Um, so I'm actually going to talk to the fire department to see what standards they would suggest for it. So as of right now, there's no draining mechanism set up.
Okay, and then my other suggestion would be too, I know at several campsites that I've had the pleasure of overseeing, we always had a community fire bucket. It was on a nice little post. There was a nice little sign that said, "Community Water Bucket. Use this to put it out, because sometimes people have a fire, they'll leave the fire unattended." And we all know what Smokey the Bear said, which is, "You can prevent forest fires." So if you could incorporate that into your design, I think that would be great.
All right, I can make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good attitude, Mac. Did, Mr. Stanbrook, did you have any comments or questions or thoughts?
I just wanted to say, "Great job, Mac." I did, I was at, attended the Recreation Commission meeting that he attended and gave his presentation. I look forward to working with him and getting this done. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve Mac Johnson's Eagle Scout project contingent upon coordination with the, with the opening and closing of public properties, and so really to speak to Mr. Stanbrook.
Kenny Mitchell, so moved.
Matt Dyer, second.
Jim Hickey.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Mr. Boss?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Laura Kemet, yes. Okay, congratulations, Mac. You are approved. And we're all hoping that you're able to get this done by your 18th birthday or that the, you know, the Boy Scouts give you a little bit more, you know, leniency and you've got additional time. But just keep the lines of communication open with us, and we'll do the same. But we're thrilled that you've thought of us and that you're bringing your resources and talents to help out up there.
Sweet. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Same here. Okay, great. Moving along, the Governor's Order related to non-essential workers. Mr. Stanbrook, did you want to, we heard from Mr. Amato about how he has been working with all of the impacted businesses around town, such as nail salons, driving schools, and hair salons. And I think it would be helpful if you could tell us what you've done as a result of that act in terms of town hall.
Yes, thank you. So what I did was I made a list of essential and non-essential employees here at Town Hall and throughout the town. Again, this doesn't mean that what people do isn't essential. It, you know, it has nothing to do with that, you know, the work that they do. It's this particular situation that we're in right now, are they essential workers or not? It's not that what they do day in and day out isn't essential. Of course it is. We run a very lean town. Almost everyone is doing something that is, in some way, essential to town function. But this is, just for this particular order, I made a list of essential and non-essential people, and I've said that non-essential people do not have to come in. They're going to be working from home as much as possible. They have remote access. Our IT Director, Ryan McGonigal, has done a great job of setting up remote access to be able to get to the programs that they need in order to do their job, and also to answer voicemails from remote locations so that people in the public have questions or they have, you know, the day-to-day life that has to continue for certain things, that, you know, our Town Hall workers and others are going to be able to, you know, meet those needs as much as possible. What we're doing here at Town Hall and then around the town is also is the social distancing and the hand washing and sanitizing techniques that, you know, we've, everyone's been talking about. We're practicing them. You know, we're trying to do everything that we can, but while still staying open to serve the public as possible, as much as possible. We don't want to put anyone at risk, but we still want to get as much as we possibly can done serving the public.
Okay, great. Did anybody on the board have any questions regarding that? Mr. Mitchell?
No, the only question I have is about signing, you know, documents as far as the board. Are you, you know, John, if you need us to stop by or, you know, just shoot us an email, because I know that might be tight where we haven't been coming in there the past couple of weeks?
We actually have that on the agenda next, discuss temporary measure for signing warrants.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Hickey?
Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Boss?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Dyer?
I'm good, but thank you very much, Ryan, and everyone else that's making it possible for people to work at home.
Yes, and I do, I do echo Mr. Stanbrook's sentiments. Ryan has been an unsung hero in the background here, really getting us up and running and able to work remotely and getting the teleconferencing going and a number of other things that have been critical to us being able to continue working in this brave new world that we find ourselves in. So I thank you, Ryan. And with that, we will move on to discuss temporary measure for signing warrants. Mr. Stanbrook, did you want to queue that up for us and let us know what that entails?
Yes, thank you. So there is, Chapter 41, Section 56 of the Mass General Laws allows, you know, if the Board so chooses, it allows one member or to sign payrolls, drafts, bills, and orders. I'm going to read you the relevant section just so, I think it's in your packet anyway, but I just want to read it so everyone can hear it. "For purposes of this section, the Board of Selectmen and any other board, committee, or head of department consisting of more than one member authorized to expend money may designate any one of its members to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls, provided, however, that the member shall make available to the board, committee, or other department head at the first meeting following such action, a record of such actions. This provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of a non-compliance with this section." So what that says is if you so chose, you could designate one member to come in and sign any bills that we might have, and you can make it for a short amount of time, a long amount of time, it can, it's, whatever you really would like to do. I mean, the alternative that isn't in the general laws, which just, because this is an emergency situation, is to have something where, for the time being, I can sign the warrants until this is over. That isn't in any general law anywhere, but it seems like it's a rational reaction to this emergency that we're in. So I, right now, I think those are the two options. We could go by the general laws, or we could go with a temporary thing where I sign it, or maybe I sign it and another member of the Board of Selectmen, something like that.
Okay, and I know other towns have gone with having their town administrator sign them as the temporary measure. So let's have a, you know, a discussion. Mr. Mitchell, thoughts?
I'm fine with having the town administrator sign the warrants.
Okay. Mr. Hickey?
John, I'm excellent. Yeah, John can do it. I mean, the less people in Town Hall, the better.
Exactly. Mr. Boss?
Here, here.
Okay, Mr. Dyer?
I'm fine with John signing the warrants for the time being. Another thought, too, would be to do a docu-sign where members of the Board of Selectmen can sign the warrants electronically. I don't know if that's allowed by Mass General Law, but that's just also a thought.
It probably could be, Matt, but quite honestly, you've seen the size of those documents. I mean, it's incredibly unwieldy, and you really couldn't just sign, you couldn't just send that signature page without the background and ask people to do a docu-sign. I mean, in some cases, it's like 200 pa, you know, depending upon what it is. But I mean, you know, they can be really large. Do you have an objection to it being, John, or?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, for some reason, I just cut out and I didn't hear most of what you just said. I just got back on the line. So... what you just said, I just got back on the line, so, um, I only got-
Oh, no, 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 I wasn't, John, I'm sorry, I wasn't asking you if you had an objection, I was asking Matt if he had an objection to you being de- it being delegated to you.
I, I, I apologize, I just came back on.
Oh, that's okay. Yep, sorry about that.
Nope, nope, of course not, I just was thinking to help Hanson get one step close, you know, one more step into the twenty-first century, to look at, uh, other options as well, but nope, I have no problem with John, um, signing on our behalf.
Okay, and, uh, nor do I, um, so, um, John, just to walk us through this, if we were to take the vote, which it seems as though we're about to, and, and vote in the affirmative, uh, then you, uh, just to make sure that we've got full transparency and everybody knows what's going on, you would, at the next meeting, um, provide us with documentation about what had been signed, or, and on an ongoing basis, provide us with what had been signed, how would you propose to keep us informed on that?
I could have a summary at the, at the meet- next meeting of what was signed, I could actually scan the entire warrant and, uh, and send it to everyone, um, I'm, I'm open to anything that would increase transparency, but, um, you know, decrease the likelihood of this spreading, um, so, I, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever it takes, I, I can give a summary, if the summary is enough, if you want to see the actual warrants, I can, I can scan the entire warrant and to, and we could talk about it at the next meeting, um, I, kind of-
Well, I, I don't want to add to, um, look, you're already chief cook and bottle wash right now, doing quite a bit, so I, I, my inclination is not to add, uh, to your workload, um, but, uh, maybe we could do a modified approach where you give us a summary, and then if a particular board member has a yearning to get more detail, they could ask you, and you could be responsive to that and scan everything in, but of course, everything is always available for them to look at hard copy in the office, but we're trying to limit that type of interaction, so, does that seem okay?
Yes, I'm okay with that. Sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Okay, um, so I will entertain a motion to allow Mr. Stanbrook to sign the, um, warrants, and perhaps we want to tie it in, um, to, I don't know what kind of a period of time we want, I don't know if we want to just sort of leave it out there, because we don't know when we're going to emerge from this, or if we want to do June first, and then just, you know, kind of, um, have Greer remind us just before June first, if we have to revisit it, I'll, I'll, you know, entertain a motion anyway you guys see fit.
Could we suggest, oh, sorry, Matt, this is Wes, could we suggest, like, say, for the month of April, do it to May first, and then revisit?
Is everybody in agreement on that? Uh, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, that's fine, May first is fine.
Okay, Mr. Hickey, are you okay with that?
I'm good with that, yep.
Okay, and Mr. Dyer?
Yep, and I'll second the motion.
Okay, great, so, Greer, um, if you could just keep us honest and make sure that the week prior to, um, prior to May, I don't know what, what dates our meetings are, off of the top of my head, but, uh, if you could just make sure that we are, well, actually, they're right here, so you'd have to let us know at the April twenty-eighth meeting, uh, to revisit that and take a vote.
Will do.
Okay, great, all right, uh, so the motion has been made and seconded, um, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Laura Kemet, yes. Okay, great, so we're through that, and we're on to considering the postponement of the town election pursuant to recent emergency legislation. Uh, in your packet, uh, as you know, uh, we, uh, the governor just signed a bill that allows postponement of town meetings, et cetera, et cetera, along with a million other different things, um, but, uh, what is on the docket for tonight is for us to discuss the postponement of the town election. As you know, we voted at the last meeting to postpone our town meeting to June fifteenth, and the reason that we did that is that it's tied into, uh, if we do not have a budget by June thirtieth, then you go to a one-twelfth, uh, budget, which we are all becoming way too familiar with, given the regional, uh, school agreement discussions, so, um, eh, based on our vote last week, and the fa- fact that there's been recent emergency legislation, the town clerk had expressed concern that we were going to have two different dates for the town, you know, for the town election was not going to be connected to town meetings, that you have to actually vote at town meeting to have the town, um, election, um, and because of this recent, uh, governor's order, so she's proposed, uh, a, in the annual, to based on our June fifteenth, twenty-twenty date that we had voted last week, that we have the annual town election on Saturday, June twenty-seventh, and then if we back into that, that the last day to obtain nomination papers would be Wednesday, May sixth, the last day to submit nomination papers to the registrars would be Friday, May eighth, the last day to file nomination papers with the town clerk would be Friday, May twenty-second, the last day to object or withdraw would be Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, and the last date to register to vote for annual town meeting and annual town election would be Tuesday, May twenty-sixth. Did anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Mitchell?
No, I spoke to the town clerk last week about this, so I'm totally fine with all these dates.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
I actually spoke with Beth, uh, also, and I'm fine with all of this.
Okay, Mr. Bloss?
I also spoke with Beth, and I'm fine with this.
Okay, Mr. Dyer?
I am fine with this, yep.
Okay, great, uh, and Mr. Stanbrook, did you have any comments or, or anything you wanted us to know in addition to what we just mentioned?
Um, I just have the, I, I don't know if you have the motion from, uh, Town Council, um, I, I, if you do have it, that's fine, if you don't, I can read it and, if it's helpful.
If you could read that, that would be great.
Okay, um, this is, I move that the Board of Selectmen postpone the date of the annual town election to Saturday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, pursuant to Chapter forty-five of the Acts of twenty-twenty.
Okay.
Kenny Mitchell, so moved.
Great, so, so who moved it? Mr. Mitchell, and then Mr. Hickey, did you second?
I will second.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you had seconded, I wasn't trying to force your hand into seconding it, um-
Nope.
Okay, uh, all, all in favor, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
And Laura Kemet, yes. Okay, uh, let's see, moving along, vote to appoint members to the Regional School Assessment Committee. So, uh, we, the school committee is meeting tomorrow night, virtually, I guess, a, a group of them will be there physically, but our invite is virtually, uh, and eh, they are going to ask us for our, uh, representatives, I have reached out to Kevin Sullivan to see if he can give us a FinCom representative, I have not heard yet back from him, have you, Mr. Stanbrook?
I haven't heard anything back, uh, he, I have, like, he could have sent an email in the last few minutes or so, or last hour, I don't know.
Okay, all right, but, but, okay, um, so we'll follow up, but, uh, we appointed our citizen-at-large last week, um, along with a, an alternate, and so this week, the discussion is they're looking for, um, either the town administrator and a Board of Selectmen member, or a selectman, uh, or two selectmen. So, uh, I will open up the discussion on that. Mr. Mitchell, thoughts?
Um, good question, I think one selectman would be enough, I don't know that you need two selectmen.
Okay, so, so you're leaning towards this, a member of the Board of Selectmen and, or a selectman and Mr. Stanbrook?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Well, before I volunteer, uh, John to actually be part of the committee, um, does John want to be part of the committee?
Miss, Mr. Stanbrook, I don't think we're volunteering, we're just talking about what people think, you know, um, the composition should be, Mr. Stanbrook, I don't want to speak for you, I know I did already speak to you about it, but-
Uh, I, I will be on any committee that you would like me to do, what the board wants me to do, I will do it, um, if you think it's useful that I be on there, then I'll do it, if you think it's useful for me not to be on it, and maybe assess what comes out of the committee, I can do that too, um, whatever you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's, that's why I had asked, I hadn't talked to John before this, so, um, you know, where there's an option of one selectman and the town administrator, or two selectmen, um, if you want to be part of the committee, that's great, but like I say, we didn't talk, so I had no idea.
Yeah, okay. Um, Mr. Bloss?
So, at present, Mrs. Kemet and Mr. Dyer have both been informally meeting with a similar group, with selectmen and so forth, so, I don't know, are, are Mrs. Kemet and Mr. Dyer both interested in serving on this committee?
Um, (laugh) my lord, um, well, what, can we defer on that conversation for a minute? Uh, but I, I think philosophically, we need to know what, are you thinking, eh, eh, you know, I, I didn't express, because I kind of wanted you guys to let, to say where you were at, but, uh, Mr. Dyer, if you want to let me know your thoughts, then I'll let you know what I'm thinking, you know, which has been changed by the current circumstances we're in, I, you know, anyway, that's all I want to say on that. Mr. Dyer?
Um, yeah, I, I think it'd be great to have John on the committee if he believes that he has the bandwidth to handle, um, such committee, and the time to handle the committee, uh, to have someone with the numbers, and know it, uh, know our numbers, and the school numbers, I think that'd be great, um, and what, and appoint another selectman to it, uh, that has the time to do so, um, I think would be great.
Okay, so my concern is if this starts picking up momentum right now, I, I, let's make no mistake about it, we need Mr. Stanbrook with his expertise, um, his ability to, um, crunch and discern numbers, um, and, you know, his financial acumen, we need him, uh, so whether he's actually a member of this committee or not, I would want him to participate to the degree that he's able to, and attend the meetings, even if he's not a voting member, um, I, I hesitate to have one selectman on this, because I think it really only represents one perspective, and I think this is a fairly important issue, uh, and is a fairly important part of our budget, uh, in the future, and I think it is going to require more than one selectman to do this. I also believe that it's going to be a commitment level, uh, that, uh, whomever it is, or, you know, uh, is going to need to put in a lot of time on this, so I hesitate on top of the other duties that Mr. Stanbrook ha- has, you know, on his plate, uh, to add this, particularly right now, with everything going on, um, I don't, so my, my perspective is I think it should be two selectmen, and I think it should be Mr. Stanbrook as a supporting, as he has been anyway, as a supporting role, and attending as he's able to, and adding value as he's able to, but not necessarily voting. Um, Mr. Mitchell?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm totally fine with that, I don't know that I would have the time, or to be able to make the commitment to do it, Laura, that's, that's the only thing, but however you want to structure it, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Mr. Hickey, thoughts? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to suggest, hey, Mr. Mitchell, I'm putting on, I was just trying to get your thoughts, I didn't clarify that, uh, Mr. Hickey?
Well, um, Laura, I agree with, uh, what you're saying about, um, John being there and crunching the numbers, I also like the idea of having, um, two selectmen, um, on this particular board, um, if needed, uh, I mean, obviously, everyone knows, uh, what my schedule is, that I'm up very early in the morning, um, but, uh, make no mistake about it, right from the start, uh, I know the board knows where I stand, and I'm hoping most of the townspeople know where I stand, so I'm not sure if I could go into a committee like this with, um, uh, without a preconceived notion of where I wanted to end up, and, you know, I'll state it again, um, that I just don't think it's right that a stu- a student from Hanson would pay more than a student from Whitman being taught by the same teacher at the same school.
I, I don't think you're going to find anybody disagreeing with that, I'd even one-up that and say, I don't think it's right that we're going to be paying more and not getting anything different from this year, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to incite a riot, but, uh, so, um, okay, I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not sure that you need to, I, I don't know that you need to go in without having preconceived notions, it's virtually impossible for any of us to go in without thinking of what we would see as our ideal outcome, I think the prerequisite would really be that we're willing to work towards some kind of a mutually agreeable outcome, it may not only be agreeable to Hanson, it might be a little bit, everybody's going to have to give a little, I don't see any other way this is going to get solved, it can't be Hanson loses and Whitman wins, or, you know, Ha- Hanson wins and Whitman loses, it's, then we'll be in that perpetual stalemate that we're already in, which we've discussed ad nauseam, uh, but I, I don't think you need to go in neutral, I just, you know, uh, so just think about that, but, um, Mr. Bloss, uh, thoughts on that arrangement of two selectmen and, um, Mr. Stanbrook in a supporting role?
Right, I, I mean, I think the town and the Board of Selectmen are pretty unanimous on where, well, our opinion, I think this is the only question right now, do we have two selectmen, or do we have one selectman and Mr. Stanbrook? I'm, I'm prodded, I could go either way, I have you and, I know you and Matt have been doing the legwork on this so far, and I don't, I don't want to see either one of you, especially if you're both still interested in it, I want to see any one of you cut out of this mix, John could be workers and advisor, he's also, I mean, he really is, we hired him for his financial acumen, and I think that's a huge asset to this whole project we have going, but, I, I mean, if, if the board thinks that probably having two selectmen is the better option to do, I'm, I will go with it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dyer, thoughts?
Hi, this is Matt, um, I, I wouldn't mind continuing serving on the committee, or step up to this committee, uh, the only thing to know is I will not be available until five PM, um, every day during the week, uh, that's the only concern that I have, I know that there's been a couple of times where we met, or the, there was a meeting during the day, that I'm not going to be able to break away from, uh, work during the afternoon, not until five.
Yeah, fair enough, and I know I, I find myself as a working person as well, um, having to assert that I do have a day job, as you do, and that's what pays the bills, um, and so I think we just, you know, we make that clear, and I, I feel comfortable that Mr. Hayes would be responsive to that, as I believe other members, uh, that have been appointed, both from the school committee and from Whitman, um, have the same situation, so, um, I, I hear what you're saying, and I echo those sentiments. Um, okay, um, so I am wondering how people think we should proceed?
Uh, can I make a motion then to appoint Laura Fitzgerald and Matt Dyer to this committee?
Second.
And, and I'm fine with that, but I also want to make sure that you guys are engaged and informed, and that where you feel as though you're engaged and informed, so I'm, you know, if you think it should be somebody else in, on the board, I'm totally fine with that.
I, I personally, Wes Bloss has faith that Laura and Matt will keep us informed.
Should I second it again?
No, 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 (laugh) yeah, we're going to take five motions, (laugh) I'll see how, how many times it takes till it changes, um, okay, so we've had, had it made and seconded, uh, Mr. Dyer, do you have any objections to that?
Nope.
Okay, um, I will take a roll call, Mr. Mitchell? Okay. I will take a roll call. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
And Ms. Kemet, yes. Okay, that brings us on to the review. And so, John, you're okay with that? You, you know where we're coming from on that. And again, we're relying upon you to really help out on this, and so far, you really have, which we appreciate. Review and vote new recreation department rates for services. Mr. Stanbrook, did you want to queue that up? I know we've all got the exhibit in our packets.
Yeah, so the, the, at a regularly scheduled Recreation Commission meeting held on March 9th, 2020, it was unanimously voted to make, make some changes to the current rate structures. On the Camp Kawani wedding packages, the wedding and reception rate for Saturday is $5,000. That wasn't changed. But there was a change to a lesser rate for reception only with no wedding ceremony for Saturday, and that's $4,500. And there was also, they, they changed the, something to do with a wedding and reception rate for Friday and Sunday. That rate is $3,500, which hasn't changed. But there is going to be a lesser rate, if you choose, a lesser rate for reception only, so no wedding ceremony for Friday and Sunday of $3,000. So in both cases, the wedding and reception rate without the ceremony would be $500 less. There was also further voted to implement an off-season 20% reduction in all wedding package rates from November 1st through April, April 30th of each year. And the, the Recreation Commission appreciates the action going before the board tonight for a confirming vote.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell, thoughts, comments, questions?
Tom, on number two, it says wedding and reception rate for Friday and Sun, and Friday and Sunday, $3,500. That's during peak season or off-season?
Uh, that looks like it's, uh, peak season.
Okay. All right. And then on Saturday, and then the 20% reduction would be on the off-season Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
Yeah.
I don't think it's, it's be across the board, right? Any day, really?
It's all wedding packages with, um, on, yeah, between November 1 and April 30.
Any, anytime during the November 1st, April 30?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Hickey?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Bloss?
I'm good.
Mr. Dyer?
I'm good, thank you.
And, and I'm all set. So I will entertain a motion to accept these changes for the Camp Kawani wedding packages.
Kenny Mitchell, so moved.
Matt Dyer, second.
And Hickey, second.
Okay, I will take a roll call. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
And Ms. Kemet, yes. Okay, great. Clipping right along. Consider write a first refusal on 902 Main Street, Unit 40. As you guys will recall, last week, we had not put on the agenda Unit 40. This is one of the affordable units that we've got the right of first refusal on. So you've all got this in your packet. We kind of had already reviewed Unit 39, I believe, last week. I will entertain a motion.
Kenny Mitchell, so moved.
Second.
Great. Roll call, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Kemet, yes. Okay, we are clipping along. And Mr. Dyer finds himself unable to continue to be the Old Colony Planning Council representative, which, Matt, I believe they meet once a month on the third Wednesday, is that right? Or the second Wednesday?
Yes, usually the third, usually the third Wednesday. They meet at, right at the OCPC building, which is right across from Brockton City Hall. Really great, nice group of folks, just due to work. I'm just going to step down from this position.
So, Mr. Dyer, I know when you let me know about this so that we could put it on the agenda, we had had a brief conversation that we're not really sure this needs to be a member of the Board of Selectmen. In the past, that was not the case. We've had the planner be the representative. We've had various people in various capacities be our, be the representative. So I'm wondering, Mr. Dyer, at this point, do you think that we should work with Mr. Stanbrook to identify a staff member that should be our representative? Or what are your thoughts on this, on filling this role?
Yep. Other communities has a community member at large, others have selectmen, others have department heads. I think it would be beneficial to have whoever sits on this position, that they're in tune to what is going on in the city of Hanson, or not, not the city, but the town of Hanson, my apologies, and that, that they're able to speak on behalf of the town as well for any community needs that arise. So whether it's a town employee or a member at large, as long as they're informed and can make a good judgment call on the behalf of the town, I feel comfortable appointing whoever meets that criteria.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Stanbrook, did you have thoughts on this? I, I, I don't believe Mansfield was a member of the Old Colony Planning Council, but I'm sure you were a member of a different planning council. And I'm, I'm not suggesting that it be you because, again, everything cannot be you. We need to, you know, save you as the precious resource that you are. But I'm wondering, you know, do you have thoughts on whether we might engage somebody from planning or conservation or one of the land use boards or a citizen at large? What are your thoughts?
Uh, in Mansfield, we had, it was either the engineer or the DPW director as the, the consortium group that, that would, that would match up to OCPC in Bristol County. I, I, this is just me thinking right off the top of my head. I, I would think that our planning director, our planner, town planner, I'm sorry, Deb Petty would be a, a good fit for this type of thing. I haven't talked about it, but I think it'd be, I, I think she'd be the person that could, you know, really step in on this one. So I could ask her if, if the board so chose.
I, I, that sounds right to me. And Matt and I had even kind of, sort of arrived at that conclusion, but I didn't want to, you know, presuppose that Deb would have that availability, although I know she, she's the most logical person because 99% of what they're doing is around all of the work that she's doing, you know, with grants and planning and, you know, complete streets and all of that stuff. This is right up her alley. So I, I think if you're willing to have that conversation with her and check in on her availability and, and that type of thing, perhaps we could wait until our next meeting to make the appointment. I'm hoping that she is able to fill that need. And if she is, then I think there really wouldn't be a need for much more discussion. And if, and if she isn't, then I guess we, you know, if you could come back to us with some suggestions about who you think might be, you know, an alternative to that.
Okay, as soon as this, this is over and, and we're all back working again, I'll ask her and, I mean, I'll ask her before that, but I'll, I'll definitely have an answer for our next meeting, one way or another. And if it won't, if it isn't her, then I'll, I'll, I guess I'll suggest someone that should, it should be other than her. But I think it really should be her, I think.
Okay, agreed. Did anybody on the board, Mr. Mitchell, have any thoughts on that?
Nope.
Mr. Hickey?
No, I agree with John. I think that would be the perfect fit.
Okay. Mr. Bloss?
The same.
Okay. And I, I know, Mr. Dyer, I don't want to presuppose. I, I assume you agree as well.
I, I do agree, but I just want to make sure that we are sensitive to Deb's schedule because she's already working one night a week or every other week on behalf of the town. I just want to make sure that we are not pulling her away from her family two nights in a row if, if meetings line up like that. So I just want to make sure that we're sensitive to her schedule or to whoever's schedule that takes this position.
Yep, agreed. And I think that's part of the conver, that's the conversation I think John will probably have with her. Yeah.
And then also too, we are allowed to have an alternate for this, for this position as well. So we could hypothetically appoint Deb or whomever, but also have an alternate just in case whoever it is cannot make it that week.
Okay. So I, I think that's a, a fair point. So for our next meeting, once John has had an ability to have a conversation with Deb, hopefully he could come back to us with, you know, yay or nay on the Deb front, and then a suggestion for an alternative, an alternate there. Okay, that's a good point. And I, I know a lot of the, the alternates do, do show up, you know, when, when the primary person can't attend. Okay, great. All right, John, so that brings us to acknowledgements. And I did want to acknowledge that Mr. Stanbrook has been diligently and earnestly behind the scenes, working with all of our staff to make them feel supported and make sure that they've got the tools that they need and keeping things humming along. And we appreciate that. And I already did a shout out to Brian, but really can't be said enough. I don't know if anybody else had any other acknowledgements that they wanted to share? Mr. Mitchell?
Nope, I would say the same thing. John and Greer, you guys are both doing a great job. Keep up the good work.
Mr. Hickey?
Agree.
Mr. Bloss?
Agreed, and thank you to everyone at Town Hall and Police, Fire, Highway, everybody for pulling together.
Agreed. Mr. Dyer?
Um, no, I just want to echo what Mr. Bloss was just saying. You know, everyone in the town hall, everyone, all the first responders and everyone behind the scenes, as well as, I would just like to throw out to all the stores that are still open, that are doing takeouts and everyone that's supporting the businesses as the community comes together.
Nicely put. Mr. Stanbrook, I will turn it over to you for the town administrator's report.
Thank you. I, I just, I just wanted to first start off by just saying, you know, some people that are, are listening or listening to this message or later on or listening on the call right now, might think that, you know, I'm going to go over some things and you're going to say, you know, why, why is he talking about these things? And given our, you know, the, the situation that we're, find ourselves in right now. But I think that, you know, it's some sort of normalcy or familiarity is something that people really need to, just so that people know that, you know, that this, you know, this is an unprecedented situation, but this, this will pass, just like everything else. So, I mean, I'm, I'm going to continue on with a normal report, like, even though we're in abnormal times. So I, I just want people to realize, I know that what's going on. But I, I think sometimes, you know, going to, going back to the familiar and the normal might help some people. So I, I know, I know where we are, but I'd like to continue anyway with, as if this was a normal meeting and at a normal time. So I'm, that's what I'm going to do. So for old business, the, the board had asked me to make, had some previous action items from previous meetings, and one of them was to add a placeholder for Green Hanson's Energy Aggregation article. I have done that. Also, there was a, asked to have a Citizens Information Panel. Greer has been working on getting that going for when real life starts back up again, whenever that might be. So on new business, the town hall generator is now operational. I've been working with Highway Director Matt Cahill to improve the aesthetics of the generator area, maybe placing a fence or planting shrubs or plants or some sort of thing to kind of mask the, the generator. But it is finally in and working and ready to go. On the ADA self-assessment, I, we had a procurement, Mass General Laws Chapter 30B solicitation of three quotes because the amount was between $10,000 and $50,000. We received two quotes by the due date. I awarded the contract to KMA LLC of Newton, Mass for the amount of $38,200, and we've reached a successful contact contractual agreement. The other bidder in the, in the process was lower with their bid, but the, they were the apparent low bidder and they did not include towns parks in their price, and they offered to add the parks on at another price. So the apparent low bidder gave us a price without the parks included, and which means that their bid was non-responsive to our quote solicitation. And it was also a contingent bid, which is, you know, I'll give a price given if you do these things. And we have to reject non-contingent bids. So that, we're, we're ready to go with KMA LLC of Newton, Mass. They've been in contact with, with Deb Petty, our town planner. The work will start immediately. I, I believe that they can still continue working and there isn't any social distancing problems or anything like that. So they, I, I think they're ready to go. So I'd like to thank town planner Deb Petty for doing a, a great work, really hard work getting this process going. And that's, that's, you know, a positive, I guess, that things are still moving in one direction anyway. The sale of the fire truck, Auctions International, we, we put the bid out through them. They were, they, they closed on the bid on Friday, March 13th. The highest bid was $2,900 by Robert Mulholland from Wolfboro Falls, New Hampshire. The bid has been awarded, and we'll be receiving that check shortly. And the, and the fire truck will be moving off the premises. Again, thanks to Fire Chief Jerry Thompson for his great work on keeping that ball rolling. The Whitman-Hanson Regional School Operational Comparative Audit Deadline has passed. We did receive one bid, and I have shared, shared it with the Whitman Town Administrator Frank Lineham. With what's been going on, we haven't been able to meet to go over that bid and whether it meets the specifications or not, we will, I'll be assessing that as soon as we possibly can and in the near future. And I'll report back once we reevaluate that bid. The Liberty Street Complete Streets Project has been advertised in the newspaper, on the Comm Buys website, on the Town Bulletin Board, and the Central Register with a deadline of March 26th. We should be able to get rolling on that as soon as the current situation allows as well. And again, Matt Cahill, the Highway Director, and Deb Petty, the Town Planner, have been working on that. So kudos to them. The Library Temporary Part-Time Youth Services Librarian, we had advertised that position. We got two responses. Greer Gatson, the Library Director, Karen Stolfer, and I interviewed both candidates back when we could interview people. And both candidates were excellent. I recommended to the trustees that they hire Lisa Crowley for that position, and she's gone through the required background checks, and she will start whenever normal business is resumed. I'd like to thank Greer here with me and also Karen, the Library Director, for helping me out and picking that hiring decision. In your packet, you saw the letter from the Governor on Chapter 90. The Governor filed his annual $200 million Chapter 90 Bond Bill. Hanson's share of that bond will be $322,487. That's $752 over what we got last year, only .23% up from last year. But that's also happening. The fiscal year 21 health insurance rates for the town, I attended a meeting of the Mass, not, I'm sorry, Mayflower Municipal Health Group. I always say Mass and it isn't, it's Mayflower. Mayflower Municipal Health Group, I attended the meeting on March 11th, and a 2% increase was, was passed through from the health group, and they were using $3 million plus of reserves to stabilize the rates and allow that 2% increase to occur. Blue Cross Blue Shields rates increase was about 7.5% with a 1.5% admin fee, and Harbor Pilgrims increase was 8.75% increase. So the treasure collector, Jean Sullivan, calculated the initial budget, of the employee benefits budget with a 10% placeholder in there. So she was pretty much right on if they, if they had not decided to vote to stabilize the rates with, using $3 million of reserves. She was very close on projections. So great job on Jean to get close to the number. And so she had 10% in our fiscal year 21 budget, but with the 2% rate, the savings to the town is $265,055. So that's something positive happening anyway, that employees, health insurance rates will be down. anyway, that um, employee, the health insurance rates will be down for fiscal year 21. Um, and also the, the sale of Zero Liberty Street, the rebid, if you remember, we had bid it, but then we couldn't award the, the project, um, because of some, uh, some idle information, some, some required information was left out of the bid. So we rebid it. That deadline is up, uh, this Friday, March 27th, at 10:00 AM. Um, in the bid documents, it says that the bids will be opened in the Town Hall's, and I'm sorry, in the Town Administrator's office. Obviously, we can't do that. Um, so I, we're going to move uh, the bid opening to the parking lot, in the lower parking area of Town Hall, instead of inside the building. Um, those who wish to attend, uh, and I'm gonna be getting this out on the website, uh, but those who wish to attend the bid opening will be required to maintain social distancing requirements. And um, just so if anyone's listening, uh, you know, don't worry, my voice will be loud enough, so you'll be able to hear what I'm saying, um, uh, even though we're gonna be outside. Um, also, in your packet, it was late today, I had a, and perhaps that isn't for tonight, but may, for another, another meeting, um, taking the vote of, of, I'm sorry, the annual town meeting vote, uh, your, your vote from last week, of your annual town meeting, of moving it to June uh, 15th, and also the vote tonight to move the annual town election to June 27th. I put something in your packet of a hypothetical calendar that backs, uh, backs up the selectmen's meetings and votes based on those two dates. And um, it just, when you get a chance, if you could take a look at that, and maybe that's a, um, some discussion for the, our next meeting on the 7th, uh, any, any changes to the calendar that you'd like to make. Um, again, it's just hypothetical, something that I worked up. Um, so just in clo- in closing, I've, I've been impressed with both the professionalism and the dedication shown by town, the, the town select officials, employees, and volunteers. Um, I'd like to thank them as well as, as the towns' residents, for their resiliency and understanding given the current situation. And I think we'll all get through this together. And um, um, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that I came here, and I'm not going anywhere. And uh, uh, I, I like what I see so far. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, John. Um, I, um, we're, the, in terms of old business, I think we're gonna skip over that. There's nothing really to discuss until we all get together to discuss it. Uh, but in clothing, I would just like to say, uh, we've got a lot of folks getting laid off, um, in a lot of these industries that have been considered, um, you know, non, non-essential. And uh, they're being hard-hit. The food pantry's open even as we speak right now, uh, for folks that need help. Uh, United Way's got some information out there. I have found Representative Cutler's updates to be particularly helpful. And, and I, the guy is like, I'm exhausted following all of his posts. He's just constantly putting things out there after Governor Baker's um, conferences, you know, after, after he uh speaks to the public, and after he issues orders, and, and all of that. So I would encourage people, if they wanna keep up to date, to, um, you know, follow Josh and, um, and Mike Brady. I, I in particular have been getting information from Cutler. Um, and also, stick to primary sources, uh, to public, the Department of Public Health, or the CDC. Uh, try to stay away from speculating and, and all of the crazy stuff that's out there. Um, and, and to the extent possible, if, um, you know, you can support the small businesses, these restaurants are struggling out there. Um, most of them have had to lay off a lot of their staff, but they're um, eking out a living by uh, doing the takeout. If people are able to do that, um, certainly do that. And just try to be kind to each other and help each other out. Um, 'cause we will get through this. Um, and um, there'll be a lot of personal growth in between. Um, so I, I again, thank everybody, um, you know, on the board, and uh, John, and Greer, and Ryan, and everybody at the Town Hall, and all of our town employees, um, you know, police, fire, and everybody else. And uh, we will again be meeting, our next meeting will be on April 7th. Um, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Matt, so moved.
Kenny, second.
Uh, roll call, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Hickey?
Yes.
Mr. Bloss?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes, have a good night.
And Laura Kemet. All right, thank you, and take care, everybody. Be safe.